The August 12th meeting, the Harwich Planning Board. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the Chair of the Board. According to Mass General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair. Does anybody intend to record this meeting? Okay, seeing nobody, I would like to invite you all to recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's always nice to see a full room. This evening, we have our first item of business is a public hearing case number PB 2025-17, Eliza Kendall, through their agent Mark Dibb, PE Cape and Islands Engineering, seeks approval for a site plan review special permit with request for waivers. Proposed project is to construct a 4,800-square-foot prefabricated metal building for contractor base with access, parking, and utilities. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51, 325-55, and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11. Property is located at 103 Main Street Extension, assessors map 55, parcel N1-2, and the parcel is approximately 20,201 square feet. Parcel is in the industrial limited IL zoning district. Mr. Dibb, good evening.
Good evening. Again, Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands Engineering on behalf of DeVar and Shalimar Scott, Scott's Landscaping, for 103 Main Street Extension. We're here tonight for a special planning, site plan review special permit for the property. It's an existing 10,000-square-foot lot, vacant lot, in the industrial limited zoning district. The applicant is proposing to build a 4,800-square-foot prefabricated metal building that will have four contractor bays in it. The applicant does plan to use, own, and use the building as well for their business, which would take up one or maybe two of the bays, depending on their needs. The building is essentially centered on the, put this on top, in the middle of the site. There'll be access from Main Street Extension. The driveway will come in. If you're looking at the building, it'll be on the right of the building or the west side of the building. There'll be access into the building along that side. We've provided some parking, both in front and in the rear, as well as a dumpster area in the back. Septic system is sited along the easterly side. Will meet all setbacks. We do believe we do not need any kind of variances or anything like that from the Health Department. We've provided some landscaping and planting details on the front layout plan. The intention is to, the larger green circles, is to save some of the existing vegetation in that area. As you can see, the proposal itself, you know, it does utilize much of the site. It's a very small, small property, so like these other trees, we did locate the ones around the edges to see what we could save. We do not, the ones without the green circles, we feel we need to come down in order to just have room for the building, or the septic, or the drainage, and things like that. So, you know, we are attempting to save what trees we possibly can and add the landscaping island shown. There's a planting plan within the, the site plan set is a photometric plan. We're using full cutoff lighting, mostly from the building. We'll handle the site, so they're wall-mounted things that you'll see on the lighting plan. There's not overspill off the property. The drainage, we've proposed drainage systems for both the front and the back. All the roof drains will be tied into subsurface systems, as well as there's some catch basins that will provide some stormwater treatment for the project. It'll be, we plan to infiltrate, capture and infiltrate storm runoff for the entire parcel. On the, on the lot, there will be a tight tank for, for floor drains, if necessary. If it's designed for vehicles entering and exiting the building, it's required to have floor drains that, that tight tank meets the requirements for the plumbing code. And we do believe we're not really seeking any kind of zoning relief. We've cited the, the building within setbacks, provided distance from property line to the parking areas, things like that. We do, depending on how you read the landscaping requirements, we're not particularly proposing more trees, but we're trying, we are trying to save what we can on the site. So it might, depending on how you read the landscaping requirements, there might be a waiver required for, from planting a couple new trees based on the number of parking spaces. We did receive a peer review from VHB last week, I think it was the middle of last week. I respond to the, responded to that, I think by Friday, you know, within a couple days, but I, that just hasn't been seen through to fruition at the end of that. We're still, I still anticipate some back and forth. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Great. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you read into the public hearing, this is a site plan review special permit for Scott's Landscaping, 103 Main Street Extension. And again, the site is 20,201 square feet, and the proposal includes a 4,800-square-foot structure, steel metal building with, for four contractor bays. There'll be paved parking, as well as a landscaped entrance and fencing with existing trees. The applicant has asked for one waiver. I think in my last staff report, I indicated two. There is actually only one. The applicant has met all of the zoning requirements for the IL in terms of the setbacks and the frontage and the minimum lot size requirements for zoning. And again, for all applicable laws, this, the special permit is as required by Mass General Law, Sections 48, 48, Section 9 and 11, and per the Harwich Code for Sections 325-51 and 325-55 for site plan review special permit. Again, this project is located at 103 Main Street Extension, assessors map 55, parcel N dash, N1 dash 2, in the industrial limited area. We, I shared the applicant's packet regarding the project to all department heads, who did not receive any comments of concern. And again, I won't go through all of the application and hearing documents. It's in your packet. Again, they have met all of the zoning and dimensional requirements in the IL. The road access and egress is via a curb cut off of Main Street, and it is less than the 50-foot maximum requirement. The parking layout includes eight spaces in addition to, including one handicap spot. Stormwater management and drainage, it was reviewed by, by VHB, and as the applicant indicated, they did respond to VHB's stormwater report, and VHB is still finalizing their response to the revisions of the site plan. And the architectural renderings and building floor plans are being worked on currently, but I don't anticipate that being an issue. We can request or condition that that be submitted prior to a building permit being issued. There will be signage in the front of the building, a four-foot poly sign, pylon sign, sorry. And there is a dumpster with screening to the rear of the building. There's also adequate screening as required by Harwich, by the Harwich Code. The applicant also submitted a lighting plan that will be dark sky compliant and LED wall sconces along the building. And so, Mr. Chair, that's all I have to present at this time.
Thank you. So would you recommend, as we discussed, perhaps continuing until we get that storm drain matter resolved?
Yes.
And then we can, is that satisfactory to you?
Yeah.
Are there any questions for the board before we continue? Because I don't think we necessarily have to close the hearing, but we could just continue it at this point, right?
Correct.
Entertained a motion to continue? Till, would the 9th be satisfactory to you? Because we have a rather busy schedule on the 26th. I don't know if you want to get involved in that, embroiled, I should say. I mean, if you, if you want to do the 26th, I mean, it's just going to be a long meeting, so that's fine. I mean, we'll do it.
Yeah. The current real estate deal is, you know, kind of at the end of the month.
Time sensitive, okay.
If we could.
Let's do that, then. Can we put it on, condition the, let's condition the continuance until the 26th, no later than 6:30 PM?
Right.
Is that acceptable for your motion?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll see on the 26th.
Okay.
That brings us to the second item of the evening, which is case PB 2025-19. Davenport Realty Trust, through their agent Paul R. Tardif Esquire, seeks approval for a multifamily use special permit and a site plan review special permit. The proposed project is to convert an existing commercial/office condominium structure into a 10-unit multifamily residential structure with no exterior changes to the building. Chapter 48, Sections, excuse me. Application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51, 325-55, and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11. Property is located 72 Route 28, assessors map 10, parcel F6, and the parcel is approximately 33,981 square feet. Parcel is in the commercial highway 1, CH1, and residential medium-density RM zoning districts and the West Harwich Special District. Mr. Tardif.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I do represent the Davenport Realty Trust. Sitting with me is Christian Davenport, who's the Vice President of Operations. The trust is the potential owner of the property at 72 Route 28, and as you indicated, we are seeking multifamily use special permit and a site plan review special permit to allow for the conversion of the property from an office condominium to a multifamily residential As you indicated, the property has just under 34,000 square feet of area. It's improved with a two-story commercial office condominium structure, which was built in approximately 1989. The existing structure was the subject of some internal water damage about a year ago, and all the office delineations have been removed from the structure because of the water damage. The building is 27 feet from the front boundary, 13.2 feet, and 67 feet from the side boundaries, and 86 feet from the rear, and lot coverage is currently at 63.4 percent. Applicant proposes to maintain the existing structure, to construct eight one-bedroom residential apartments and two studio apartments. No changes to the building coverage, no changes to the building height, no changes to the exterior of the building. The shell is there, and it's usable, and we plan to use it just like that. There will be an increase of parking spaces to 40, three of which will be handicapped, accessible. 15 spaces are required. The building has been and will continue to be connected to the municipal water system. There is a existing sprinkler system at the building, but we're probably going to replace that with a new sprinkler system as well. We are seeking that special permit partly under Chapter 325, Section 51, which, Q, which has to deal with multifamily special permits. As I indicated, there is a, it's connected to the municipal water system. The, the floor plans have been submitted. Mr. Chairman, I believe you have those. The, the dwelling units have a minimum floor area of not less than 120 square feet. There'll be a brand-new septic system being installed that will handle everything there, plus all the outside entrances to the dwellings will have protection for the immediate area in front, upset entrance from the weather, so that we have porches and some protection from snow and rain. We do have a drainage plan that is prepared for this with the existing culverts and some additional drainage systems to be in place. We do have recreation, a small recreation area that we're probably going to enlarge a bit. We were aware of some of the letters that had come in asking that if we could expand that recreational area a little bit and maybe make it green. So at this point, it's currently this area up here, this rectangle, and because we have so many parking spaces, we probably can lose about five of those parking spaces adjacent to that and make a nice green area up there for recreation. So I believe we also meet the requirements for Section 325-55, the, under E, conditions of approval. We do have some measures for the screening of parking areas. We do have some vegetation that is planned for here. We're going to maintain what we can along the boundaries, obviously a little tight on this side because of the parking that's existing, and some in the front as well. The, the travel lanes are at least 24 feet, if not 25 feet in the back, and as I indicated, we'll have surface water from the parking areas will be disposed of by means of proper drainage. So we hope to have questions from you, if we can answer them. You do have, I believe, a stamped site plan at this point in your possession. If you don't have it, it was sent in, and I know that you'll have them.
We just received them just before the start of this meeting, so thank you. I'll pack some more picks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you have any questions, we hopefully answer them.
We'll continue with the report from the town with Ms. Flynn as soon as she returns to her seat. Thank you, Christine.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is case number PB 2025-19. The application is for a multifamily special permit in addition to a site plan review special permit. The applicant's agent is Paul Tardif on behalf of Davenport Realty. Matthew Kelly, President of the West Harwich Office Park Condominium Association, has authorized, on behalf of the condominium association, to empower Davenport Realty and their attorney, Paul Tardif, to act on their behalf. Landowners, the, the location of the project is 72 Route 28, West Harwich. Map and parcel ID, map 10, parcel F6. Again, this is in the commercial highway 1, as well as the residential medium and the West Harwich DCPZ. The development type is a conversion of an existing commercial building into 10 residential units. The lot area is 33,981 square feet, and the existing building is 10,956 square feet. There were no requests for waivers. The project, again, will convert an existing commercial condominium, business park into a, not business park, commercial building with condominiums into 10 residential apartments for rental units, eight one-bedroom apartments, as well as two studio apartments. There'll be 40 parking spaces, and there were additional site plan improvements to the parking lot area for the residents. We have had two letters of, that were submitted in opposition to the project. The application is under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11, and the Code of Harwich, Sections 325-51Q, multifamily special permit, and 325-55, site plan review The project was developed, was originally developed and had site plan review back in 1986, and at that time, there were limited requirements for issues of stormwater management, landscaping, and so the information that we had was a bit different than what was approved by the planning board at that time. So I did just want to make the planning board aware of that. However, given the location of the project and the current building, there'll be limited changes to the front landscaping. The access road off of Route 28 will remain the same. And in terms of zoning requirements, they do meet the dimensional requirements and use requirements for the commercial highway zoning district as, zoning district. The road access, again, is approximately 24 feet, and the curb cut is less than the 50-foot maximum as required by Harwich zoning. There will be several ADA accessibility improvements to the site, which will be a benefit to So there'll be additional improvements for three handicap parking spots, as well as improvements in and out of the building for handicapped accessibility. And the parking layout will also include 40 parking spaces. 15 spaces are actually required. There will also be a bike rack located, thank you, right in front of the, right behind, to the rear of the building, rather. And the landscaping in, landscaping plan and screening, there'll be, the existing stockade fence will be replaced with a seven-foot-high cedar-based board. There'll be, there will also be gathering area to the rear of the property. There's, in the form of a concrete patio, as the applicant indicated, they may do additional landscaping and softscapes to improve the area for tenants. The applicant did submit architectural renderings and building floor plans, and the applicant will also be required to install a new septic system that will need to be approved by the Board of Health. And there is, there will be a dumpster located for residents to the rear of the property with the cedar fence enclosure. There is existing lighting that will not change at this time. So we, I did have several questions to the applicant in terms of the number of units and the restrictions for affordable or attainable housing, and if the units will be year-round. And will short-term, will there be any, will short-term rentals be prohibited, as well as several other questions that we can get to? If the applicant wants to, if you want me to read through them, or do you want to answer them?
Sure, I can go through them if you'd like. We're not going to restrict any of for affordable, but based on the size of the units, there's probably not going to be much difference between the market rate and the affordable rate. The units are not going to be restricted to year-round rental units, but there are also probably not going to be anything but year-round rental units. That is what my client typically does with their rentals. The short-term rentals is not going to be prohibited either, but it will not be sought after. It's not a weekly type of situation here, so. There are some, there is some space in the basement for some individual storage areas for each of the tenants. We have submitted the stamped site plan, and, you know, I think that there are a few other comments too. Obviously, the septic is going to accommodate everything here. There will be alcoves to protect the building. Again, we, we have 40 spaces designed, probably don't need all 40. 15 is what's required. We would like to have a few more for guests and people, visitors coming, but, but most of these units being one-bedroom or studios is really going to be probably two people, likely one car, maybe two. So we'd like to have just a little extra breathing room for those people. I think, I think this answers some of your questions, right?
Yes, I did have one additional in terms of stormwater management and drainage. The applicant did also include highlighting some of the catch basins and the downspouts from the building. And I don't know if you planned, you had indicated that you may do additional drainage survey when you install the septic system, so if you could elaborate a little bit more on that.
Yeah, so in addition, we added for the building, because it wasn't required at the time, there's subsurface infiltrators that are shown in the plan to connect all the downspouts to subsurface drainage. And there's five existing catch basins in the parking lot that should be adequate for the impervious area, that's existing.
Is there any increase or decrease in the impervious area to current conditions?
Essentially, the addition of the, the recreation area there is concrete, added some square footage of impervious area, but we could talk about possibly doing something that's not impervious to keep the, we could keep the square footage the same.
Right.
Especially, we expanded the recreation area, which is, we've been discussing.
So we do have some dangling issues, but do we have questions from the Board at this point? Nothing, nothing, no. Anything from the public? So if so, please, I encourage you to come to the podium, state your name, address, and...
My name is Lou Urbano. I live in West Harwich on Riverside Drive. I really liked the presentation. I'll start there. It's as good as other presentations that I've heard on development. What I didn't hear, and I would ask the Board to ask for this, and to really think and look at it, is we mentioned a special district, but I didn't see a comparison of how this project and the special district melt, not just in terms of building size and so forth, but what the intent of the special district was and is over its 10-year development. It's basically what's starting to happen, because, and again, I urge slowness and a lot of thought. The state is going to put a highway in. They're going to revamp 28. There's been many public meetings, slowing down traffic, trees, walkways, all to build on the image of what the community had asked for years ago, continuing to today. This is what the community wanted. I understand what developers want. There's a natural conflict. I would assume those conflicts can be eliminated by really looking at what the community wanted and trying to fit in with what the community wanted, rather than an economic reason. The highway is one thing, what the people wanted is another. The traffic situation on that road brings up a lot of issues, same issues that Pine Oaks has brought up. I know right now, the traffic's backing up to what used to be the church, and it's gone beyond that a few days. I don't know what another 10 cars will do, or 20 cars, or 40 cars. I know that we have a new building right there, right at that corner. Used to be a schoolhouse. Now it's apartments. It's been well done. We all love it. We can't wait for it to get open. But that's going to add. Next to that, we have a proposed development of anywhere from 26 to 40 units. That's going to add. So this isn't a single G. Does this make sense? Because if it was alone, sitting alone in any other place, I would say, they've seen, look, they're looking at green areas, bicycle racks, making sure that the building stays the same. They've really done their homework. Homework can be changed. I remember the church very well, and I sat in on those meetings, and I won't go any So again, patience, take your time, look deeply, and please ask... again, patience, take your time, look deeply, and please ask for how this building change will impact the vision of the special district. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Urbano.
Good evening, members of the planning board. I'm Mary Alvis, 27 years at 77th Smith Street in West Harwich. I'm a local teacher. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to express serious concerns about the proposed development to convert the West Harwich Office Park condominium into eight one-bedroom and two-studio apartments in our village. While I do understand the need to provide more affordable housing throughout the Cape, this particular project raises several red flags for our community. First and foremost, as Lou mentioned, it threatens the very character and charm that make our village of West Harwich unique. Our small-scale historic identity is not easily replicated or replaced. In December of 2019, this area was officially designated as a District of Critical Planning Concern, or DCPC, by the Barnstable County Commissioners, something our village worked very hard to make possible. The intention of this designation is not only to preserve the unique historic character of this corridor or village, but also to ensure that new construction or redevelopment fits the scale and the character of the village. Introducing higher-density housing, even in existing structures, risks shifting us toward a more urban environment antithetical to the goals of the DCPC. Perhaps more important is the environmental impact. Honestly, how much more can the Herring River take? Over the last 20 years or so, I have seen a marked deterioration in the health of the river. I'm sure my neighbors will agree. And yet, most of the larger housing projects being proposed in this town are near to the Herring River. Perversely, these are also the parts of town slated last for the addition of sewers. We already have the West Harwich Schoolhouse and a plan for even more units on the Captain Baker property, and Davenport's potential plans to convert the West Harwich Baptist Church to 13 apartments, as Lou mentioned. Further upstream of the Herring River is the looming threat of the massive Pine Oaks project. High-density housing projects, honestly, should simply not even be considered in this town until the sewers are in place. Lastly, there's real uncertainty about the genuine community benefit of this project. It's unclear who these apartments are for. Will they be affordable to the people who work here? Are teachers, nurses, and tradespeople? Or are they designed for seasonal use or rental income? We just heard that short-term rentals will not be restricted. A series of one-bedroom apartments is certainly not welcoming to our families on the Cape, the very foundation of our community. If this project is not serving a clear community housing need, we need to ask, who is really benefiting from this proposal? We are not anti-housing, anti-growth, or anti-progress, but we are in favor of smart, sensitive, community-guided development that protects our environment, respects our history, and strengthens, not dilutes, our shared future. I urge the board to consider the broader and long-term implications of this project, and to protect what makes our West Harwich Village and Cape Cod as a whole so special. Thank you for your time and for considering the long-term health and identity of our community in your decision.
Thank you, Ms. Alvis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sally Urbano from West Harwich. Before I begin, I just wanted to share, I went to the local comprehensive planning meeting the other night, and I came away with two things that may be applicable, applicable to us tonight. The first, they suggest that housing be dispersed throughout the town of Harwich, not concentrated in any one area. And the second was in response to their survey, which was to say, the number one concern here in Harwich is that we maintain our village character, which ties right in to what the rules and so forth are for the DPC district. I hope you'll use every bit within your power to turn down this conversion from commercial use to housing. In fact, I'd be so bold as to say, West Harwich's village future really depends on your doing that for us. The current property at 72 Route 28, it's in within Captain's Row and the DCP district. We have some of the most dense and diversified housing in Harwich here, including private homes, rooming homes, multifamilies, duplex, habitat built in Section 8. To maintain and leverage the Captain's Row area for heritage tourism, economic opportunity, and a pleasant place to live, that is to say, village atmosphere, commercial properties are needed and wanted. We were reasonable when we put those rules in. We wanted to see this happen so that it could be both housing and these small businesses within the area. Because the vision of Route 28 was nothing but one multifamily unit after another, and many concentrated, as mentioned, it would be from the square, where there are plans at the Baker House for housing. We have the West Harwich Baptist Church, possibly, who knows? And then the school rebuild, and then down to 72, that's a concentration, if you're just driving down there visually, that's a concentration of housing that will really give up, an impact to the visuals. It's potentially, can rapidly become a suburb, a housing complex, and not a village. We must guide the developing area to avoid, to avoid this at all costs. If you think about a village, it has character of place, as well as commerce, or restaurants, or shops, even the old post office, public spaces. And we worked very hard with MassDOT, and MassDOT is easy to get them to bend. But they worked with us, they acknowledged the sort of neighborhood feel with little businesses in the back. They acknowledged that, and they worked with us to try and help maintain that. Plus, we are still on the docket to become a national registered district. If we're not careful, we will lose that opportunity. Captain's Row area, have many people here tonight from other parts of Harwich, also many of the original founders from Captain's Row, who worked so hard and put in money, time, sweat, equity. We, massive outreach to everybody, the HCAHC, the Board of Selectmen, the Cape Cod Commission, MassDOT, and town meeting vote, which finally said yes. This is a template for a village, and we want to go forward with this. I urge you to support the town's vision that we've crafted very carefully. Please support that for us, and not the Davenport vision. It's very frustrating to have put in the work and then have someone come in and just say, not look at the DCPC ruling. Please turn down this conversion of a necessary commercial building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Urbano.
My name is Helen Baker. I live at 94 Route 28 in West Harwich. I have an opinion that is based on fact and a lot of passion. I haven't spoken here before, but this is a big enough issue that I'd like to speak tonight. In my opinion, and an effort here with to convince you, worthy of your consideration, in no way do I mean any harm to any person, group, or business. I've had my own business in West Harwich on Route 28 for over 40 years. I've operated out of my barn and carriage house. I understand the bottom line in business. There's a time and place where it is appropriate, and a way of going about your business and the way you conduct yourself with integrity that counts and yields results for the common good. My parents bought and restored 94 Route 28 in 1971. I was 12 years old. I own there now, I live there now, and I work there now. My mother was from Charleston, South Carolina, where preservation is paramount. Charleston is considered the finest example of historic preservation in the United States. I've always lived in old houses that were restored and enjoyed it very much. When she moved to the Cape, she chose a sea captain's house in West Harwich to restore it. She purchased it for $25,000 and was told to tear it down, blow it up with dynamite, just be done, and build something new. She didn't. She restored it, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars over the 50 years that she had it, making it what it is and morphing it into different uses. The little village of West Harwich was charming at the time. As a child, I loved telling people that our house was a stagecoach stopover from Plymouth to P-Town overnight with the carriages and the carriage house. For the past 54 years, we have kept steward at great expense maintaining the property. Our family has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. This year alone, I invested over $100,000 doing a new roof, doing a porch, painting, shutters. I would have rather had maybe an agger range in my kitchen or steam shower, but I opted to do what was right for civic duty and responsibility. I carry the porch, and my daughter will as well. She and her husband purchased at 5 Mansion Street, which is around the corner. I can see her house from my kitchen window. She has witnessed conscientious preservation from both sets of parents and grandparents. West Harwich is rich in history, and it's reflected in its buildings, houses, and their occupants. It's no surprise that as many houses are being well-maintained. Many have fallen to ill repair by neglect and lack of interest. This has created an opportunity for developers to come in, purchase at rock-bottom prices, to create a stream of profit for their companies. Imagine a Dollar General across the street from one of the finest examples of Greek revival and a historic church. Now, on the question of housing, I'm a proponent of affordable housing. I offer an apartment in my home that is rented at well below market value. I've had the same tenant for 15 years and raised the rent once. One day, taking a walk from Herring River to Dennisport, I counted the housing units. Would you believe that there are over 50 units in a stretch of a quarter of a mile? Let's add the brand-new units going up in Dennisport on top of the ones that already exist. I venture to say, within a quarter of a mile to half a mile, there are 100 units. That's enough. Now, not to pick on Davenport, who has long provided affordable housing before it was a burgeoning issue that it is today, but West Harwich is the wrong location for the enterprises. Their purported intentions at the outset often don't match their approach. For example, their modus operandi at the Baptist Church, they purchased it with the intention of restoring it for housing. After the purchase, their engineers deemed the building a teardown, never even visiting the building. They've abandoned that project and left it to further ruin, not clearing a downed tree and leaving it open. This project was a bottom-line project for financial gain, bought at a fire sale price. In my opinion, the plan for West Harwich Village should include mixed-use dwellings, both residential and commercial. In the true New England style, it should have a church, a few stores, restored homes, and some smaller dwellings in the way of cottages and apartments in addition to green space. I believe the private home, I believe the apartment offerings are presently maxed out. We have a mix of rooming houses, Habitat for Humanity, private homes, and Section 8. What we need is restoration of deteriorating buildings and homes, and light retail and commercial. It's all about balance to yield a diverse and charming village that celebrates its history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Any bells from the public?
Hello, I'm Alan Longton, and I live at 9 Belzneck Road. I wrote a letter, but I'll tell you, I'm gonna, I'd probably read it, but these folks did such a much better job. Had a lot more preparation time, I think, but... So I'm obviously opposed to this development. We're already growing a lot of apartments, as was already discussed, with the schoolhouse, the second building, the renovation of the church, the corner lot on 28 and Depot Road. So I really think, as this last woman mentioned, it's just over-densifying the population in that area of apartments. I guess that's really the main thing I had to say. These guys already got my comments about, if you guys actually approve this, they, you can't have 40 parking spaces. I mean, turn it into green space. And not only that, as the last one mentioned, Davenport took over the church. If you drive along 28 and you see the stumps and the sticks, that spot is an eyesore. I mean, take care of it. Clean it up. You own it. It's terrible.
All right, well, we're on this property, but point well taken.
So that's it. I mean, we're a budding neighborhood. It's a quiet area. And like I said, it's just getting over-densified with apartments. It's totally unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longton. Anybody else? Yes.
Marie Gunnison, a butter, 9 Belzneck Road. So there've been a number of general comments, which I support. One of the things that I remember growing up in the area is that journey up 28 from Yarmouth to Dennis, and you cross the border and you're in Harwich. And you can tell, it's there. It's a different place. And this densification is going to move that further, you know, so that further up in Harwich, they'll enjoy that, but our village, not so much. The, I have specific concerns about this. I haven't seen the site plans. But when I heard 40 parking spaces for 10 units, and you hear that we're not restricting short-term rental, to me, that screams short-term rental. The unit, the house beside me had a family there for 30 years. They moved out, it's now B&B, and people come with four or five cars. And if you have 10, 10 places, and did I hear 120 square feet for a unit? So 40 parking spaces just screams short-term rental. You know, come down, pack as many people as you can, park all your cars. And I'm not sure what's going to be in this recreation area, but the old school used to have a basketball net. And when you hear people pounding basketballs at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning, and you're trying to sleep, or a social recreation area out back against the fence, where people will gather and party. So I have concerns about some of the aspects of what I've heard in terms of parking density, the region. And I'm not sure, it hasn't been mentioned, and I don't know the market, why it's not continuing as commercial, which doesn't have the same impact, especially at that short-term rentals could have on the neighborhood. But the, you know, the traffic, the noise in the area is already growing, and with the developments that are being put in place, the bright lights, we heard dark skies. Well, there's a number of bright lights that just shine. It's never dark in the area. So with that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gunnison. Anybody else in the public wish to address the board? Well, given the fact that we have, we are waiting on septic material and other issues, I think we were talking about a continuance to the 9th, was it?
For September 9th, but they did submit the site plan review.
Right.
You have septic.
And we do have septic with that? Okay.
They did submit revised site plans this evening, so...
Right.
If we want to take a little more time for the board to take a look at the renderings, and we can continue the public hearing.
I think we have to, we've got to continue the public hearing because...
Just a question in your staff report. There's only one line about the West Harwich Special District.
Right.
So, and that's what we're hearing tonight. It's like, how does this impact? Where is, where are the overflow guidelines for us as a planning board?
Okay, I can provide that as well.
Right, because this is something, this is like the second time we've dealt with this on a kind of regulatory intersection. We should get some clarity on the concepts involved and so...
Do we have a date for when the 28 is going to be? Do we have a date for when the 28 is going to be redone?
26 is, I think they're starting it next summer.
So it behooves us to make sure that we're...
Correct.
...well intentioned with this area.
Any other issues?
Just, there's some discussion on the recreation space. If we continue, will you come back with a definitive proposal on what that would look like?
Oh, sorry. The recreation space, I know you mentioned, you know, the potential of, I think, five parking spaces. So if we continue, we have a broader discussion on what your definitive proposal is on that piece.
I also, yeah, and the whole idea of 40 parking spaces, kind of just...
And then you said they were gonna...
We don't take, we don't take it from the field. If you want to address, but we're kind of beyond that measure, and we also have a timing issue tonight, so...
Yes, so, Paul, if you are going to revise some of the site plan with the recreation and maybe improve some additional, provide some additional landscaping or softscapes, if you can provide that to us by September 9th, is that something that we can expect? And in the meantime, I can also address, provides greater guidance regarding the West Harwich DCPC as well.
Great. Ms. Longton, yeah.
Just a question. Will some of these revised plans be available to the public?
Yes.
Because I think some of the things that you're seeing right now were not available when I went online today.
They weren't available when we walked in the room, so...
Right, so, yeah, and I think that echoes Ron. Let's slow down.
Right.
Give us a chance to look at it.
The site plans are the same, they just didn't have the engineered stamp.
Oh, okay.
That was the difference. And they are available on the town's website, and to your point, we will have them posted once we receive them.
All right, so why don't we...
Mr. Chairman.
I question one thing about the 9th. You're talking about regulatory, looking at the district?
Right.
That may take a little time in terms of talking perhaps to the county, to the state, checking with our attorneys?
Right.
I mean, just think about, that's why I say small...
Well, our next available, right, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at September 9th, right? Is the next opening, is that satisfactory?
September 9th?
Yep.
Provide enough time?
Yep, that should be...
I believe so, yes.
What we have, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have an opportunity to address some of those comments that we just made.
Absolutely, right now, absolutely. If you care to, sure. If you, yeah, why not?
Well...
Unless you'd rather wait.
I think, you know what, I think I will wait, but I do want to clarify that Davenport Realty Trust does not own the church.
Right, correct. That's right.
So, we don't touch that building, can't. So just want to make sure that everyone knows that, because there seems to be some misinformation out there about that, so...
Okay.
All right, so just...
All right, appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we'll put our comments together for the 9th, and hopefully have some new plans at that point.
Very good.
Great.
So why don't we, I'd like to entertain a motion for a continuation until September 9th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
So, motion?
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll see you on the 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for coming out to this meeting. I'm much obliged. The board is obliged, the town is obliged. This is how the town works. We have, now we move on to the public meeting. We have two short items, case number PB 2025-22, and I would just encourage you to continue your conversation outside. Thank you very much. Case number PB 2025-22, John McIlwain, PLS, Cape and Islands Engineering, Inc., agent for Mid-Cape Church Homes, Inc. Can I just ask you all to please continue the conversation outside, only because it's hard to hear?
Okay.
Yeah, no, no, you can continue, but just do it on the other side of the doors. That'd be great. Third time is a charm. PB 2025-22, John McIlwain, PLS, Cape and Islands Engineering, Inc., agent for Mid-Cape Church Homes, Inc., seeks an endorsement of an A&R, proven not required, plan entitled Land Division Plan by Cape and Islands Engineering. John McIlwain, PLS, number 33602, dated July 22, 2025, for the property at 99 Queen Anne Road, assessors map 57, parcel H1, and the residential low-density RL. In industrial limited zoning districts, the applicant has asked for an extension to August 26, 2025. I have a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to continue case PB 2025-22, John McIlwain, PLS, Cape and Island Engineering Incorporated, agent for Mid-Cape Church Homes Incorporated to...
August 26.
August 26, 2025, no, earlier than 6:30 PM.
Then go. Do we have a second? We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last item on the public hearing is, the public meeting, is PB 2025-20, Eastward MBT LLC, trustee of Eastward Homes Business Trust Agent Susan Ladue has requested release of covenant for number 16 Turtle Run, Lot 3, assessors map 63, parcel C7, and residential rural RR zoning district. The definitive subdivision case is PB 2022-12, and Lot 1, 2, and 5 were released in PB 2022-12. Lot 4 was released in case number PB 2024-12. I see, is Susan here still? Yes.
I am.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, how are you?
Very smoky, environmental, is you getting that Canadian smoke up there?
Oh, it's horrible, yeah.
Yikes.
Yeah.
Oh, now the light's back on, that's good.
There we go, and hot.
Uh-oh.
I'm sure you've been there today, too. Susan Ladue from Eastward Companies, and we are here tonight asking for a full release of the covenant, the final building lot, Lot 3, in the Turtle Run Road Construction Covenant. And I believe you have all of our items that we've submitted, and have discussed it with Christine, and our engineer, David Clark, actually talked with P-Foods today about the remaining items. So we did submit a final as-built plan. We do need to, a little bit of work on, I believe, the leach-picked covers, need a little bit of extra framing, and we've got standing or water in one area. So our excavator is going to do some work there, and I believe David and Steve talked about submitting a revised final as-built plan, showing that work completed. And so we have, are glad to post, I think I have $6,000 on the road estimate remaining, and if that would cover, or should cover, that work, if the board is willing to approve that request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. As Ms. Ladue mentioned, we have, VHB has had conversations with David Clark, their engineer for Turtle Run, and I would recommend releasing Lot 3 tonight. As Susan indicated, they have offered to provide $6,000 to cover the remaining work, and it is to really complete the leaching basins. And if you have any questions, otherwise, I would recommend taking a vote release to provide a full covenant release for Turtle Run.
Any questions? Ann?
No, no questions.
No questions? I think it's pretty straightforward.
If you could take a vote?
Let's take a vote.
And then sign the covenant release, that would be great.
Who's the vote meister tonight? Sounds like it's you, Alan.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for case PB 2025-20, Eastward MBT LLC trustee, Eastward Home Business Trust Agent Susan Ladue, requested release of covenant for number 16 Turtle Run, Lot 3, assessors map 63, parcel C7, in the residential rural RR zoning district.
I have a motion. I'd like, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Hey, I see Bob Doan there, Bob. I'm so sorry, I didn't see you there while we were having the open meeting. Let's catch up soon, and I apologize if I didn't recognize you during the, because I wasn't even paying attention to the screen, it just looked all black to me, so I hope we can rectify this.
No, I'm just listening in.
Okay. Thanks, Bob, I appreciate you being here tonight for us. Much obliged.
Thank you.
Any further business before the board?
You retired us for us?
Well, we're concerned about your...
We were concerned your time, and...
No, 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 no.
Nope.
We worked...
They've already eaten it.
Well, come on, this is...
Thank you.
I don't think that there are anything here that we are going to be surprised with, other than the registry of deed request, and...
We can do that on August 26th. We do need to have signatures, and I'll have a form ready for August 26th...
Okay.
...for boards to fill out, and then I submit the, your signatures with your name to the Barnstable Registry of Deeds, so that they have copies of all of your signatures for their records. And in addition to Pine Oaks Village Ford, there was a request, I do want to spend some time with the board to go over some stormwater management, as well as some road layout discussions in the future, if we can spend some...
Could we even, do you want to schedule a special meeting?
We could do that as well. I think it would be important to do that.
Maybe 24 to 72 hours before the 26th?
I will send out an email to the board and ask them, and ask the members for their availability. The...
That's a curveball that we weren't necessarily expecting prior to this scheduled.
Yes, and...
It relates to one of our items, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, relates to Pine Oaks.
Was it the A&R?
Well, the, and the A&R.
It is connected, but they're separate, so I do want to, it is connected to the Pine Oaks project, I want to be clear on that. But the request from the zoning board of appeals chair, Brian Sullivan...
Right.
He wanted to, just to ensure that there's been transparency and that there's been ample opportunity for boards and committees to provide input, particularly on matters that they, that those boards tend to review, that's in their whalehouse, and so they would appreciate any guidance or any comments and input from the board.
So is that as a corporate body or individually?
As a corporate body...
Okay.
...for the planning board. And I'm happy to begin to outline comments. I know Annie had submitted comments, Ann had submitted some comments a while ago, but if there are updated comments, I'm happy to also facilitate, to collate that into a report for your review and consideration.
Great.
So it'd be formal, putting together all our comments, so we can look at the past and put them together?
Yep.
And is there a deadline?
Yes. There isn't a deadline per se, but I think if we can do this before the next September 17th meeting, I think the ZBA board would appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, great. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, one question.
Oh, yes.
Really fast. On the case, the Davenport case we were just talking about, will the other members of the board be rehabilitated so that they could participate?
They can, as an option, if they would like to. That would be up to the board members to utilize the Mullen Room.
Because I will not be here on the 9th.
Okay.
So we need one.
So we'll need one more. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thanks, great point, excellent point.
My favorite topic. We're just... I was talking about...
Well, you know, it's kind of a private thing, you know, but...
It's important for this one, and we have missing Harry and Mary, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.